Good evening and welcome to the March 22 regular meeting of the City of Arcata's Planning Commission. We're holding this meeting as an in-person hybrid in order to be in compliance with the Governor's Order N-522, as well as Department of Health guidance in the use of face masks. If you wish to make a public comment during the meeting, there are three ways. While on your computer, if you wish to speak during the public comment portion of any item, click the Raise Your Hand icon on the right-hand side of your screen. When the public comment period opens, you'll be unmuted and you'll have three minutes to speak. If you're on your phone, you can also join the meeting and comment by calling the number and meeting ID, all of which is shown at the bottom of the screen. Press *9 to let the clerk know you wish to speak. When the public comment period opens, again, you'll be unmuted and you'll have three minutes to speak. If you're in attendance, you can also approach the microphone and make your comment. Again, you'll have three minutes to speak. This meeting is now officially called to order. Director Loyah, can we get a roll call, please?
Yeah, good evening, Chair. Commissioner Tagney?
Here.
Commissioner Davies?
Here.
Commissioner Barstow?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Commissioner Figueroa?
President.
Vice Chair Mayor?
Here.
And Chair Visette Elcock?
Here. And at the staff's table, we have David Loyah, Director of Community Development, and Joe Matier, Senior Planner. Is that all we're going to have, just the two of you?
We also have Assistant City Engineer David Case on Zoom. I would also make a note for process-wise that what's been working really well for the city council meetings is to take all of the in-person comment first and then move to all the Zoom and go through it one time, just so you may want to adopt that same process.
All right, let's move to oral communications. This time is provided for people to address the commission or submit written communications on matters not on this evening's agenda. At the conclusion of all oral and written communications, the commission may respond to statements. Any requests that requires commission actions will be set by the commission for a future agenda or referred to staff. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the commission on something not on the agenda?
We do have a hand raised on Zoom. Go ahead, Kathy.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Kathy Chandler-Klein. I'm a longtime Arcata resident. I live adjacent to the Gateway area, and I'd like to make a comment on the Gateway area plan. I support the plan for several reasons. The first one being sustainability. I think the climate crisis is urgent, and the Gateway plan addresses that emergency with infill, higher-density housing, plans for de-emphasizing car travel, and supporting bike, pedestrian, and bus travel. Gateway residents will have easy non-car access to the rest of Arcata. There are incentives in the plan to reduce fossil fuel use in housing and encourage electrification. These incentives should be as strong as possible. I would love to see a solar microgrid added. My second reason for supporting is housing. There's already a severe housing shortage here. Our population is going to increase, and we're better off planning what we want that development to look like. Currently, out of the area, high-income buyers are driving up the price of homeownership and rentals, pricing out many locals. We need rentals and homeownership options for all levels of income. The Gateway aims to provide economically-integrated housing. My third reason is city vibrance. I think that the proposed transition of K Street from the current state of light industry and empty lots to commercial, retail, and residential could be wonderful and add to the small-town urban vibe we love about the plaza. My understanding is that no existing businesses would be forced to move, and I think that's really important. I do have some concern about potential shading of existing homes in the plan and think that needs to be addressed carefully with setbacks and zoning. I personally would prefer a limited area of taller buildings, even eight stories, say in the Beryl District along Samoa Boulevard. I would prefer that to more mid-height buildings spread throughout the area if they shade existing homes. Lastly, I think that if the Gateway is done well with reputable developers, it could be a positive addition to our city while providing much-needed housing and doing our part to slow climate change. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kathy.
Is there anyone else?
Seeing none.
All right, thank you, Kathy. So let's move on to oral communications. This time is provided -- oh, wait, I already did that. So we're going to go down to the consent calendar. The only item we have are the March 8 minutes. Does anyone need to pull that item, or can we go to motion to approve? I did notice one typo. Do we care about typos?
Lay it on me. I think we had a correction from last time, too, so I apologize. We're on a run.
It just said, under the consent calendar, blah, blah, blah. The consent calendar was approved by a majority vote. Oh, you just said mover instead of motion. That's all. Mover. You wrote mover instead of been motion.
Gotcha. Yeah, we can make that correction before recording them.
Can we get a motion to approve the minutes with that correction?
I'll move to approve the minutes of the last meeting with that correction.
We have a first by Barstow. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, can we get a roll call?
I think that now that we're in person, you can go ahead and just do a voice vote.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
I just abstained. I wasn't here.
And when abstained, I'll say motion approved. Okay, so tonight's one and only public hearing is the use permit and coastal development permit for the Humboldt Premium at 460 I Street in Arcata. Before we open this public meeting, do any commissioners have an ex parte communications to disclose? Hearing none, can we get a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Chair. My name is Joe Matier, Senior Planner with the City of Arcata, the signed planner for this project before you this evening. It is a use permit and coastal development permit to operate a cannabis retail sales business in Arcata, and I'll go ahead and move forward on this. Staff is making a recommendation to approve this project, this use permit and coastal development permit, by adopting the environmental review exemption for existing facilities and then adopting the action of the planning commission that you'll find in your staff report as Attachment A. There's a -- the findings of approval are located in Attachment A Exhibit 1. The conditions of approval are Exhibit 2 of Attachment A, and then the Exhibit 3 is based on the finding -- or the application material you'll find as Exhibit 3 of Attachment A. The project is located in the -- on Fourth Street or Samoa Boulevard on the corner of I. It's a little hard to see right here, but it's the former VNN Burger Bar. The blue line through here is Jacoby Creek. It's one of the areas where Jacoby Creek is daylighted, so there is...
Jacoby Creek, is that what you mean?
Jolly Giant.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm off a few mile or so off of that one. Thank you for the correction. Jolly Giant Creek. And it is about a 700-square-foot former restaurant that's been -- hasn't been occupied for some time now. The parcel is about 9,300 square feet. It does have, like I mentioned, street frontage on Fourth Street. Also, on the west side is I Street, and then it is encumbered a little bit by the Jolly Giant on the east. The north of there is a residential property. We do have an existing cannabis operation, retail sales, located about 90 feet on -- in this location here on Fourth and H. The Humboldt Herb and Market is located there. It's one of the early retail sales cannabis businesses that we permitted in the city. And then also, just under 500 feet, there's about 410 and 460 feet are the Heart of Humboldt on the corner of Sixth and I, and then the Humboldt Patient Resource Center is also located there. They're actually on the same property. In this instance, the Humboldt Herb Market and the proposed Humboldt's Premium is -- although it may look like they're adjacent to one another, there is a residential parcel -- well, it's actually split-zoned that I'll see if we can show that, but it comes along on the northeast corner is a single-family residence, and the property wraps around, captures all the riparian area of Jolly Giant Creek, and then there's a small frontage area here on Samoa Boulevard. The property is split-zone. There's a portion of it that fronts Fourth Street, that is the Coastal Commercial General, and then in the back, it's residential medium-density. There was a subdivision a number of years ago that about 3/4 of this block was owned by one family, and it included the VNN Burger Bar. There's a settlement period home on the northwest corner of the property -- of the parcel block there, and then they mentioned the single-family residence here. The residents of this actually provided comments to the commission. It's in your staff report. The property owner opposes the onsite consumption based on potential impacts of odor and smoke and then also contamination that may occur to Jolly Giant Creek. Here's a couple of views of the site plan that was prepared by the applicants. On the left, we have kind of aerial photograph. There was -- after the subdivision, VNN Burger Bar operated for a number of years, and then it sold to the current property owner, and they did some improvements where they actually put in fence. And the fence comes along here to the east side. It's not on the property line, but it does pretty well define the Wetland and Creek Protection Combining Zone. The city does have an easement through the major portion of that Jolly Giant riparian area for flood control, riparian habitat, environmental enhancement. The applicants have offered to go ahead and work with the city on a riparian planting plan to increase the habitat value there, help out with some of the flood control issues there as well. It's kind of an interesting collaboration that has been proposed by the applicant. And through the referral process, we had positive comments from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, as well as the Wiat Tribes. They want -- they're interested in -- they offered to collaborate with the city and the property owner, or business owner here in this case, to work on some, you know, really nice planting in that riparian zone, so it's a -- be a nice win-win situation for our waterway there that is daylighted, one of the rare areas of the creek that is daylighted. The parcel, I just want to point out a couple of things. The application, we have in the zoning code a limit of 15 cannabis retail sales and service businesses. This is the 10th application. We've approved nine. There are currently six in operation. Two of them are going through the commercial cannabis activity permit process and also with the state licensing. The other one is -- does not have an active commercial cannabis activity permit, so I still just want to mention that there is the potential for one out there, but right now, there are at least five other, maybe six other, commercial cannabis -- well, I should say use permits available for cannabis retail sales and service in the City of Arcata. So this particular project included a request for consumption, and I'll get into that a little later, but it's our first application for retail sales to have onsite cannabis consumption, so they're kind of the catalyst for this dialogue that we -- there is a discussion in the staff report, but I'll get into that a little bit more. The proposed cannabis consumption area is located here. It was a previous patio for outdoor dining for the VNN Burger Bar, and then along this area here, which is currently kind of -- they've done some improvements. The current property owner did put the fence in, brought back a lot of the development that was in potentially the riparian area of Jolly Giant Creek, and really defined more the developed area. So there is a fence that comes along here, all the way down towards the south, and then it kicks over a little bit along there. There's a sidewalk along here. It's a pretty wide driveway here, and one of the conditions of approval to improve public safety through kind of minimizing the conflicts between bicycles and pedestrians is to reduce the width of that driveway. It's, I estimate, about 39 feet, and certainly the volume of traffic in this parking lot and the size of the vehicles expected there could be reduced. Right now, our code goes anywhere from 10 to 25 feet, so that was a recommended condition of approval. The current property owner did do some accessibility improvements. There is a ramp that comes along here to the front of the building. The building does pretty much go to the western edge of the property in the northwest corner here. There are 10-foot setbacks to the rear, 10-foot setbacks on the side there. One of the recommended conditions of approval would be to have the proposed patio even offset a little bit more, about 10 feet from this proposed -- well, from the property line on the north property line here. There is a residential unit. I would estimate over 50 feet is to the building that would be to the outside edge of that proposed cannabis consumption area. They do have -- there's some animal keeping in this area here. It's heavily vegetated right now. I just went out there the other day. There is an off-premise sign here. You see a little shadow right there, and the applicants are wanting to just reface that, so I -- actually, I said off-premise sign. It's not an off-premise sign. It is a pole sign, so they're just going to go ahead and maintain that, so it's kind of neat to see that. Excuse me. The parking area creek setback, I kind of discussed there, and then the sign I also discussed. Are there any questions at this point before I move on? They will be doing a little bit of work. They propose to reduce the parking area, add electric vehicle charging station here, and have some ADA accessibility. One of the conditions of approval we added was that we do a landscape plan. They do have some landscaping in there now. You know, they're going to be doing a lot of, it seems like, a lot of riparian enhancement along the creek, but we do even want a little bit more in this area, so that was one of the recommended conditions of approval. They do include bicycle parking, and I'll move on here. One of the findings of approval you'll see in the staff report that were embedded into our land use code is that there's special considerations, and those are distances to what could be considered sensitive land uses. One is residential. It's a 300-foot separation from proposed businesses, a special consideration. It's not a direct prohibition, and that's from residential zones, not necessarily residential uses, so you could have a commercial zoning district that does have residential uses. All the permitted cannabis retail sales are located within 300 feet of residential zones, so there's no current operator or approved use permit right now. They're all within at least 300 feet of a residential zone. The other prohibit -- well, it's not a prohibition. The other consideration is schools, daycares, youth centers, parks, and other cannabis retail businesses. That's a 500-foot separation, and most of them, all but one of -- I think I could say all but one of them, the one in Valley West, is -- are located within 500 feet of another commercial cannabis retail sales. There are no schools, daycares, youth centers, parks within 500 feet of this business. There is a school that is the planning commission approved over on K Street that is just over 1,000 square feet from the site here. The project, there's also in the findings for retail cannabis sales, does include, are there any cannabis cultivation onsite? Do they have display of live plants, or are they going to do any sales of clones, plants, or anything like that? This application does not include any of that. The onsite consumption area is allowed through the Business and Professional Code of California when it's a licensed cannabis retail business. So there are certain parameters that, under California law, allow onsite consumption, and the project does meet that. Those are generally screening, making sure that there are no minors involved, and then that there is no sale of alcohol or tobacco or use of those two items there, and so the project meets that as well. The project is designed to be over 50 feet from the existing residential dwelling unit to the north, although the project is in compliance with the state cannabis consumption regulations. What the state regulations allow is the local jurisdictions to adopt those consumption lounges, patios, and so that's what we did built into our land use code. And as I mentioned earlier, this is the first project that has come before the planning commission on that. The City of Arcata has adopted a smoking prohibition. There is a -- back, I think it was 1999, was the first time it was introduced as a part of the municipal code, and it was intended to protect our community members and employees of places that often smoking, indoor smoking, was occurring. And so the project, if they're going to consume cannabis either through combustion of smoking a pipe, rolled, like a joint or cigarette, or vaping, that would -- project would not be in compliance with our city municipal code. That's why it's kind of outlined in a different color. Cannabis consumption via ointments, salves -- I think I spelled that wrong, sorry about that. Tinctures, edibles, or drinks do not conflict with the local smoking prohibition. So it's really the combustion of the cannabis product, vaping. The original smoking prohibitions that were adopted by -- in the municipal code did not include the electronic or cannabis, but later on, there's revisions to the municipal code to add those uses there. And the city, this -- actually, the state adopted under the Labor Code some places of employment prohibitions on smoking, so they -- the state felt that if they had one code for -- to protect employees from secondhand smoke, that would be easier for the other jurisdictions to have their standards. But it did allow local jurisdictions to adopt the state standards as they chose to. The City of Arcata did that. They did not include many of the exclusions that were built into the state, so right now, well, don't want to get too far into it, but if you do have any questions on that, I can. But the city has adopted stricter regulations than the state. It was the state regulations was only tobacco and only included enclosed spaces, and then now the city has expanded it to include outdoor areas, tobacco, and cannabis, and vaping. Recommended conditions of approval, we -- staff is recommending that the cannabis consumption is limited to non-smoking and vaping, and then I do have a revision to the condition of approval that is in your packet that I'll get to in a bit. Reduce the width of the driveway, I mentioned that. Design of the solid waste and recycling. It's interesting that the solid waste and recycling was in the creek zone area before, and it comments from the Environmental Services Department, it's like, hey, look, you know, we just want to make sure none of that debris ends up in that waterway, which makes sense, and it's fully supported by the applicant. Preconsultation with the Wiat Tribes on ground disturbing activities and riparian planting, and then the consumption patio be located at least 10 feet from the north property line, and then, as I mentioned, a landscape plan as well. This is the condition of approval under the authorized use. Right now, staff is recommending that the strikeout be deleted from that, and the underlying -- it's a -- we really reduced the verbiage. I was getting paid by the word on this one, so I tried to really make it as lengthy as possible, and this one just really goes straight to the chase here. Basically, it says that the cannabis consumption is authorized by this use permit and approved plans, and the project description have to comply with the state and local laws. At this point, the edible consumption would meet state and local laws. There are some public health for food preparation areas that would not, so I don't want the County Humboldt Environmental Health Department to think that we're allowing retail sales of food products that have cannabis products in it. The only thing that could be consumed at this site would be pre-manufactured edible drinks that are sold at this business and taken and used at this site here. So if there is a tincture and -- well, the state has manufacturing, so they have a different -- when it's a wholesale of an edible product, the state has their own permit process for that, and so those items are already going to be sold at this business, so those could be sold and consumed at this site. It's not like a restaurant where I -- or a coffee shop where I order a coffee and I ask for a tincture of a CBD product or something in that. That would be in violation of the current Humboldt County food permit for retail sales, so I just want to make that clear. If the city adopted revisions to the municipal code that allowed cannabis consumption through smoking or vaping, this use permit, if approved by the planning commission, could then do that in this site.
Is that cleared, everyone? If I were to summarize what Joe just presented, currently, state law allows smoking and vaping. Local law does not. With the condition of approval stated the way that it does, the way that it's proposed here, if the city changes its municipal code and allows smoking, then this use permit would allow the consumption of cannabis through smoking, because then it would be in compliance with local law.
I'm looking at page 25 of our packet, which is where the changes that you recommended in the previous slide from your original recommendation were located, and then there's another place that seems to be inviting the planning commission to decide whether we want to recommend that the city change the smoke -- the no cannabis smoking part of the conditions of approval. It got really involved, but am I correct that by recommending that we get rid of the smoking part of the patio, that we would also get rid of the other parts with regard to a contingency on changing the city's rules, because it seems that those would be not necessary and probably would also get strike -- stricken out if we're not going to be recommending that particular condition of approval in the first place?
No, I think that the -- just to clarify, I think this revised condition of approval would mean that, under their project description where they requested a smoking lounge, if that regulation were compliant, if that project description were compliant with local and state law, then they could do smoking in the smoking lounge. And so right now, we're not suggesting that you remove from the project description the ability to use that as a smoking lounge, so they can continue to consume in other ways, not smoking, under the local law. If local law changes, then they'd be able to consume with smoking, and I think the question still is on the table. Does the planning commission want to entertain, you know, initiating a code amendment to the municipal code and having that discussion with the city council?
Okay, so that's something that we should discuss in our deliberations later. Okay.
But in the meantime, it's a smoking lounge with no smoking.
Consumption lounge with no smoking.
Okay.
And just to wrap up, staff is recommending that the planning commission approve this action, including the environmental review exemption for Class 1, Section 15301, existing facilities under the California Environmental Quality Act. Adopt the action that you find as Attachment A with the three exhibits, the findings of approval, conditions of approval, and the project description and plans. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for staff before we open this up to the public?
Yeah, I just have a small one. Joe, you recommended recommending -- sorry, you suggested that the city might be recommending that they move the patio area, the consumption area, away from the property line a bit. that they move the patio area, the consumption area, away from the property line a bit. Can you describe that a little better?
Yes, right, right, it's this property line, right, whoops. The way the flow works is that you would come in, there's a security person here that checks ID here, you could purchase your product, you would then exit the building and go directly into the consumption lounge. So to get into the consumption lounge, a public member or a client would have to go through and purchase a product from the business. And so if we move this slightly, this line here is the proposed fence, they want a six-foot high solid fence. If it is just, just adjusted slightly, you know, just a few feet, but just to make sure we have a 10-foot setback. The code requires a 10-foot setback for structures. Is a fence a structure? In this case, they could build a fence on the property line, because it's not a street one. But as a recommended condition of approval, to create a little bit more separation with the residential use on this side, staff is suggesting a 10-foot setback. Typically, that's what a building setback would be for that section right there.
Commissioner Figueroa had a question, he's raising his hand online, and I also wanted to note that the applicant's agent, I believe, is here with the presentation as well.
Commissioner Figueroa, do you have a question? You're, I can't hear you.
You can't hear me?
I can't, we still can't hear you.
Can you guys hear me? Okay, great. Joe, great presentation. Quick question regarding, if I recall, this is in the area of like Butcher, Butcher Slough and then Jolly Giant Creek in regard to the permit jurisdiction area of the, of the Coastal Commission. Does the, does this project parcel, does that overlay on this project parcel? Is my first question. And the other question is regarding the riparian planting, is there a requirement for pre-consultation with the Coastal Commission regarding that? And will it require Coastal Development Permit? And the last piece, is the purpose of the fencing around the consumption areas strictly just for respecting the residential persons to the north? Is it just a purpose to enclose it, you know, sort of situation, just for privacy sake? I'm just wondering the, the intent behind the fence, and that's it.
Thank you, great questions, Commissioner. The property is located in the split jurisdiction with the City of Arcata for Coastal Development Permit issuance. It's a very small corner that comes and nips right along here. It's almost the width of this line here, that is the state's jurisdiction. Predominantly 99.9% of the properties in the City of Arcata's jurisdiction for issuance of a Coastal Development Permit. We had the option of combining and consolidating a Coastal Development Permit with the state and letting them issue that, but we already had a use permit under process, so for us, it was easier to, to process the use permit and coincide with the Coastal Development Permit issuance. The project would require them to either obtain a permit waiver from the state, they, the state does have an option for a diminutive waiver on that. And being that, I would imagine, you know, they did get the referral comments on this and provided some comments on it, but I would think that the Coastal Commission would be supporting that. The second question you had, I believe, was the riparian area and consulting with the Coastal Commission. The project had approval back in 2008, I think, I can't remember when the subdivision went through. And in that case, the coastal development permit was issued by the state. For that project, the city did the subdivision and consolidated the Coastal Development Permit action to the state. So we didn't take any state action on that, I mean, Coastal Development Permit action on that. And working through our process for environmentally sensitive habitat area, we obtained a open space easement along there, and that allows the city to actually go in there and do flood control and, and maintain that. We did have a approved planting plan, and it includes all common riparian native plant species that I would think that both the California Coastal Commission, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and, and the ethnobotanists of the Wiat tribes would be supportive of that. I do know that the Coastal Commission is very sensitive to sources of that plant material. The Environmental Services Department of the city would be taking the lead on that. And I would, I'm actually answering a very long and should be a simple question, but I apologize for that. And I would believe that the, we would be in consulting, we'd be consulting with the Coastal Commission. I don't think that we necessarily have to have a Coastal Development Permit, because it is already a restoration project that we've initiated at one point, and it's going in there making sure it's, it's better than it was before. The third question, I believe, was the fence, and my understanding of that is to provide that security, and not only kind of a private security between, you know, a physical barrier, but also a visual barrier as well, because I think, you know, the cannabis consumption is still, we're coming out of the, the closet a little bit of that on the legalization of it and stuff like that. And I do think that they want to kind of create a nice little place for people to, to consume cannabis, cannabis if they choose to do so there. I believe that the, the agent does have a presentation and will be able to answer that more thoroughly on the reason for that, the fence itself. Hope that answered your questions.
That's good, thank you.
All right, so let's open this up to the public. Would the applicant like to have the first shot at, do you have a representative or a?
Yeah, I'll let the representative.
Oh, are they on Zoom?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, she's, she's here. And I believe, Juliette, they, the commissioners cannot see you, oh yes, they can now, okay, perfect, you're good to go.
Is this the time when I can present my presentation?
It is, yes, please do.
Sharing screen now. Can everyone hear me all right?
Perfect.
Great. Great, all right. Well, again, my name is Juliette Vaughn, and I am the agent for Humboldt's Premium on this project. And it's great to be here with you all this evening. I want to start, of course, by thanking the city staff for working with us on this project. We know it was a little bit of an unusual request, and we're really grateful for all the time that staff has spent on this. Also want to thank the Planning Commission for taking the time this evening to consider this project. So without further ado, I wanted to tell you a little bit more about this project. The core components of this project are the retail cannabis sales and the delivery services. Humboldt's Premium plans to revitalize the former VNN Burger Bar building on 460 I Street to provide high-quality cannabis retail sales and delivery services. This Humboldt's Premium Arcata store will be more of like a satellite store attached to the Humboldt's Premium Eureka retail store, where all of the product receiving, labeling, and packaging will occur, and then the products will be brought over to the 460 I Street retail location. Approximately 90% of all cannabis products to be sold in the store will be grown and manufactured locally, and thus the farm-to-table concept. The retail sales will, will occur, as Joe mentioned, in the front part of the building. And we'll have display cases akin to what the Eureka, Humboldt's Premium store has that you can see here in this photograph. The Humboldt's Premium Delivery Service will serve Arcata, Blue Lake, McKinneyville, Trinidad, and the Samoa Peninsula areas. Delivery will be taken place by, through company-owned plug-in hybrid electric vehicles with full-time delivery staff. And it should be noted here that Humboldt's Premium already conducts delivery services in these areas, but will be able to offer these services more efficiently by reducing vehicle miles traveled by having this satellite retail store that gets the products brought in all together at once from the Eureka store. Now, the other components of this, one of them is the public art component. In accordance with the style of the Humboldt's Premium flagship store in Eureka, the Arcata retail space will be partially wrapped in a mural. This is a picture of part of the Eureka store mural, which is quite large, and Humboldt's Premium plans to commission the same local artist, Ben Goulart, to create a mural that will invoke the feeling of living in the Arcata area. This public art is designed to enhance the neighborhood aesthetics and add a unique charm to the corner of Samoa and I Streets. This mural will last for about 20 to 40 years and will be coated with an anti-graffiti coating. Now, the final component of our project here is the outdoor consumption patio. The outdoor cannabis consumption patio is meant to accommodate visitors who may want to sample Humboldt's world-renowned cannabis products, but are not able to legally consume these products in the city's parks, the marsh, the beaches, the sidewalks, and may not be able to consume them in their hotel rooms or their Airbnbs. The outdoor patio is also envisioned to serve locals who wish to have a place to consume cannabis locally as an alternative to going to a bar. The patio is designed to be both discreet and park-like, with a view to the soon-to-be-restored riparian area along Jolly Giant Creek, which I'll get into a little bit more in a minute. And I also wanted to take a moment to point out that really, although we, it was a little confusing perhaps in our proposal, but although that we propose this entire area, in order to maintain that 30-foot setback from that back door, this would be more like a throughway and the actual smoking consumption would occur in this hatchmarked area, which is actually, you know, quite a bit more than 50 feet away from our neighbor to the north. Now, the onsite consumption patios, you can see, will be located on the east side of the retail building near the existing patio that was a former VNN Burger Bar operations, which you can see quite clearly in this image here, the, the picnic tables. And part of the parking lot would be removed in order to expand the patio area. This would mean that also all asphalt, brick, and concrete areas within the consumption patio would be removed and replaced with permeable pavers in order to increase the permeable surface on that site. Native plants will be incorporated into the consumption area landscaping in order to further limit visibility, enhance ambiance, and provide habitat and/or food for native pollinators and other wildlife. The outdoor consumption patio will be situated behind a six-foot-tall wooden visual barrier fence that will block direct line-of-sight views from the parking lot, the building entrance, as well as Samoa Boulevard and I Street. And this speaks to the question that was asked a couple of minutes ago, but it's the general recommendation that comes out of the Humboldt County Code for Onsite Consumption as well. So again, just kind of as this, as, as we move towards a new social model of consuming, these are some of the provisions that are put into place. The patio will be blocked from view of the adjacent parcels through, the neighboring parcels through the existing six-foot wooden fence, as well as the established trees and shrubs on the property borders that you can see here. Now, although the zoning code does allow the Planning Commission to approve onsite consumption, the City of Arcata has not yet established requirements for this type of permitted use. And as such, we reviewed the onsite cannabis consumption requirements for other jurisdictions to develop a set of conditions that were designed to ensure safe consumption of cannabis products. And I'm going to go through now with you some of the key provisions that were included in the operations. First and foremost, the all-law enforcement and all neighbors within 100 feet would be provided with the contact name and phone number for a manager and an owner, such that any problems could be addressed immediately right onsite. Secondly, the applicant, Humboldt's Premium, is willing to limit the occupancy of this patio far below what normally might be permitted in an outdoor setting such as this. Additionally, that six-foot fence would keep it, keep the patio being private and from being viewed from any, viewed from the public. And the security guard that will be onsite at all times during business hours out in front of the building will also be there to monitor noise from the outdoor use patio. Okay. Additionally, all staff will be required to remove litter at the end of each day on the patio and within 100-foot radius of the patio, therefore to catch any wind-blown trash that might come onto the property. The patio will have posted materials about cannabis dosing for those clients that might be new to cannabis consumption. And staff will be trained to provide information about available bus and ride-sharing services should that become necessary. Finally, there will be an announcement at closing time to respect the neighborhood that this outdoor use patio would be set in and to keep the noise down when leaving, including shutting car doors quietly and talking quietly. Now, this next slide is to give you a sense of the outdoor patio in relationship to the neighbors. Again, you can see that Humboldt's Premium really tried to position the patio as far away as it could from the existing neighbors and also from the streets, which placed it right about here on the property. Now, I wanted to give you all some sense of what outdoor consumption patios that are already permitted look like. This is, of course, our local outdoor consumption patio in Eureka. This is the first ever permitted outdoor consumption patio in the United States that was developed in West Hollywood, California. This is an outdoor consumption patio in Toronto, Canada. And here is one in Ontario, Canada. And I wanted to point out that this setting is also a mixed-use setting, you can see there residential uses there behind the patio. Now, on to the community benefits aspect of this project. One of the biggest benefits we see is the revitalization of the corner of Samoa and Boulevard and I Streets. You can see in the picture here, it's been, as Joe mentioned, abandoned for quite some time. This revitalization will reduce the potential for illegal camping, which has occurred a time or two on this site already, and also will attract new foot traffic to the area, which could possibly really help out some of the restaurants in this part of town that don't get to that kind of walk-by and stop in traffic that the restaurants on the plaza experience. So we think this would be, help out the other businesses in this part of town by drawing new foot traffic in. Additionally, the onsite security presence during business hours will promote a safer neighborhood for all, and as occurs already at the Eureka flagship store, the onsite security officer will also monitor and pick up litter while they're out there on duty. The parking lot for this site is quite large, you might have seen in Joe's presentation, it's kind of a rarity in Arcata. And one of the actual benefits, we are reducing the number of parking spaces as part of this plan, but one of the benefits of having this existing parking lot is the ability to work with other folks in the community for small, now-and-again fundraisers such as Girl Scout cookie sales and blood drives. Humboldt's Premium already does these two activities at their very large parking area in Eureka, and a neighboring business is already planning to host a blood drive on April 1st at this parking lot site. So we see that as another benefit to the community, this space that with a lot of visibility to Samoa Boulevard for when local events like this are looking for a spot. Additionally, Humboldt's Premium will bring the landscaping into performance with the city's standards, which will involve just making sure the right amount of trees and shrubberies are placed into the parking lot area. And if the outdoor consumption patio were at some point to be approved through Arcata Municipal Code, this certainly would draw in a lot of tourists to, to Arcata, and perhaps most importantly, would draw in the tourist dollars and also the tax revenues. I want to remind you all that currently Humboldt's Premium serves delivery clients in Arcata and all areas to the north, but those revenues stay in Eureka. If this dispensary is to be approved, then all of those delivery sales tax revenues would stay in Arcata, which we think is also a good benefit. Now, I wanted to just show you these slides to kind of emphasize the revitalization aspect of this project. On the top-left corner, you can see an old RV repair building, which was then redeveloped and re-envisioned by Humboldt's Premium into the storefront that you see in the lower right-hand corner. This was previously somewhat of a bit of an eyesore on Broadway, and now there is a beautiful intriguing building that, you know, interests passersby. So I, I feel like that revitalization can make a very big difference. Now, moving on to our sustainability plan, the biggest piece, I would say, is the plug-in hybrid delivery vehicles. Humboldt's Premium envisions there might come a time when there will need to be two, when delivery services would expand, and they would need to have two vehicles, and at this point in time, they would consider getting an all-electric vehicle for their second vehicle in order to have the maximum operational flexibility to make sure that they can. in order to have the maximum operational flexibility to make sure that they can reach all their clients. The storefront operation itself will, of course, be powered by a hundred percent clean energy through RCEA's Repower Plus program. The building will have modern LED lighting throughout and bike racks for both employees and customers. And I want to point out here that there will be separate bike racks. One bike rack will be behind the enclosed fenced-in area for employees to feel safe about having their bikes there during the business day. And then the other bike rack would be out in the patio, or excuse me, in the parking lot, available for clients and customers. At the end of each year, Humboldt's Premium will purchase carbon offsets to offset any of the gasoline purchases and any other emissions, operational emissions attributed to that year in order to achieve net zero emissions. The staff will be trained to separate mixed recyclables. Air hand dryers will be placed next to hand-washing stations, and low-flow water fixtures will be used throughout the building. And of course, all construction debris will be recycled at the end of the the building restoration renovation process. A unique component to this project is the habitat protection that really starts with the Jolly Giant Creek restoration. As Jo mentioned, this project parcel is bordered on the east side by the lower reaches of Jolly Giant Creek. And in 2013, a biological study was conducted on this two-hundred-and-forty-foot daylight section that's connected to the channelized portion of the creek that flows in the culverts beneath the city streets. The report recommended restoration that includes removal of the invasive grasses, replanting of native grasses, and planting native trees and shrubs. The restoration was actually, as I read, Jo can correct me if I'm wrong, but a provision of the subdivision approval of that entire block property. And there was a planting plan developed that we intended to follow and use. The effort will promote wetland and Jolly Giant Creek habitat restoration by creating additional shaded riparian area along the creek and providing protective screening and improved habitat for amphibians, reptiles, and birds. Planting trees in the protected area will also support long-term soil stabilization, as well as efforts to remove and replace the invasive reed canary grass that sort of choked up the creek there. Humboldt's Premium plans to work with the City of Arcata on this restoration project, as well as work with the Wai'at tribes' ethnobotanist to determine the most appropriate and beneficial plants and trees to use in this restoration. And we're actually really excited about that collaboration. Aside from the main restoration component, and I just want to point out that this is that twenty-five-foot wetland and creek setback that is called for, where the reforestation, or excuse me, the replanting effort is called for in the planting plan. And as you can see here, that's, there's some space for that to happen. In addition to that restoration, Humboldt's Premium plans to adhere to the Dark Sky Association lighting practices for all of its outdoor lighting. This includes motion sensors and daylight sensors in order to really reduce the amount of nighttime lighting that would be near that riparian area. And the illuminated business sign, the Humboldt's Premium business sign, will be turned off after business hours. We will also have a no-idling rule. Signs will be posted requesting that clientele do not idle their vehicles while in the parking lot, so as to reduce any unnecessary emissions. And finally, the existing fence, which you can see here, is a little wobbly and not as secure. It will be upgraded and will be brought all the way to the ground in such a way that any wind-blown litter can be caught before it can enter into Jolly Giant Creek. Now, herein lies the challenge. Onsite consumption and outdoor consumption patios are really the next frontier in our post-legalization world. And as such, many jurisdictions have had to figure out how they want to engage in this new social model of cannabis consumption. Here in Arcata, the land use codes indicates an interest in providing a permitting pathway for onsite consumption, while the Arcata Municipal Code prohibits all smoking in places of employment, including all land pertinent to the place of employment, thereby really limiting the opportunity for onsite consumption to occur as the code stands now. It's very understandable, as things have been in flux since legalization, that the city might need time to consider how to best reconcile these two pieces of code. Having said that, I would like to reiterate that the outdoor consumption patio was intended to provide a safe and legal place for tourists to consume cannabis products and to de-stigmatize cannabis consumption by providing a classy park-like space for people to socialize while sampling some of Humboldt's finest products. We also understand that the smoking patio area is of concern to some neighbors. And we've tried to design operational requirements to minimize any potential impacts. However, we don't want to cause problems for our neighbors. And although the patio was part of the original project, Humboldt's Premium is willing to accept the staff recommendation and take the consumption patio out of the project plans. I mean, it will stay in the project plans, but it will not be anything that gets developed until such time as the city amends a municipal code to allow for such activities. And with that, I am, of course, available to take any questions. And as I understand it, James Alves is in the audience and would also be available to take any questions. So thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who would like to talk about this project? Please step forward.
Urban Market Humboldt, which is located directly next door to this proposal. And I am a lifelong cannabis activist and advocate and support permits and lowered barriers to entry and access to licensure. So it's a little bit uncomfortable for me to step up here and to share with you guys that my experience with the City of Arcata and with Jo in particular has not been the same as what appears to be so supported in this topic today, as I have been speaking with Jo Matier and the city since 2019, 2020, 2021, and 2022 about onsite consumption in the grass patio between myself, or the grassy area between myself and this parcel. I have been repeatedly told that code, it was against code, there was no way. And I feel like this project is piggybacking on the four years of support that I have gained from the community and my neighbors. And so I was really disappointed to see that Irene Simone, the immediate neighbor there, has written a letter in opposition to this plan when her and I have been working very diligently together on how we could create a safe onsite consumption location that was outdoor in the fenced-in grass patio just north, just, is it west? North? I think it's like west-south of the site. And so, while I do support the permits, I support the process. I do feel like there has been a double standard with my license. I was four-hundred-and-ninety-seven feet from the nearest cannabis retailer when I came before you guys the first time. And I thought it might be a deal-breaker, because I didn't know it was just a special consideration. I thought it was the code. So it took me multiple years to find a spot that was right and would create this environment, this like experiential marketplace, which was my vision. And instead, the other two applicants, Mary Ellen and, or the other two dispensaries that were nearest to me, they were over five hundred, but right there, came out and supported me at my hearing. So I would like to do the same thing today. But I just wanted to kind of, I was surprised when Jo said that this was the first. And it has not been the first. And I had created positive rapport with the community around onsite consumption. And then the other thing is that it was said in the, you know, in the original plan that I received that there was no concern from the neighboring businesses. And I do want to express that times have been really hard during the pandemic, and the cannabis businesses do not get any support. And that none of us own our buildings. So without being notified, we would have no way to communicate about this project. And I had reached out when I talked to the landlord or the owner of the property next door, because we need diversity, we need cafes, we need coffee shops, there was the tamale, there were all these businesses that wanted to be in the burger bar. But the owner was only willing to sell and not to rent to any of these people. So anyways, I just felt like we needed more diversity. We didn't need to, you know, have another dispensary right there in the middle of the three of us that exist. And so I kind of felt like I reached out to the city ahead of time to, you know, talk to them. And I was told, okay, we'll forward your concerns on. I never received anything back. And also, none of us ever received notification of this project. And so I just feel like there could have been a better collaborative effort for us to talk about it, because I think all three, all of the cannabis retails here would support that there is a need for onsite consumption in the city, because a lot of, not only tourists and other things, but also a lot of residents live in these houses and they don't have access because their landlords don't allow smoking in their, even in their residences. So all the Danco properties, all of these properties, there are plenty of people that need a safe space for onsite consumption. So I do support the onsite consumption. I support the concept. I've been working for four years, both with Fish and Wildlife, with Coastal Development, and with both neighbors, and have been given support for onsite consumption in that area. Yet the city just threw obstacles in my way. So that's it.
Thank you. Turn this thing off. Anyone else from the public?
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary, and I'm not here to speak about the project specifically, but about the parking and the bicycles. And I am a citizen of Arcata who rides a three-wheel tricycle. And there are several people in the community who ride larger-than-bicycle vehicles, pedaling vehicles and such that are not cars. And I think projects like this with limited parking for automobiles, we might consider converting parking slots for both either pedaled vehicles or automobiles, so that if I come in on my trike, it's very hard for me to park in one of those small little trike parking things. And not that this particular project needs to do that, but when I'm looking at things like this, people like me are sort of left out in terms of wanting to not drive a car somewhere and taking other means. But it's very difficult for us to park our vehicle, our bicycle, our tricycle there. And so I just think we should start looking at converting parking slots to be, you know, acceptable of any type of vehicle that somebody comes to a place of business to do. So I just wanted to put that out there as a consideration. Maybe not for this project, or they could be, you know, the standard bearer or whatever. But we've got to start looking at alternatives to just accepting parking lots for cars. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone on the?
We do have one hand raised.
All right.
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Patricia Lai, and I'm a neighbor at 545 I Street. I'm also a cannabis consultant and engineer, and I used to participate in the before-time illegal marijuana industry and have been on the front lines of legalization. I just, you know, the density, you know, you have this VNN, you have Urban Market next to it, you have the Cooper Building, which also has a use permit, even though there currently isn't a dispensary there. You have HPRC, and you have the Heart of Humboldts. So there is a big density here, and the differentiating factor is the onsite consumption. And so I implore you, Planning Commission, to consider if you are going to allow the other OG dispensaries in this neighborhood to do the same. This is the last ungentrified liberal town in coastal California. We are the example. This is the heart of the Emerald Triangle of legacy cannabis. The public art installation mural should be about cannabis. If that's too risque for Arcata, then ask the Wai'at to blow up that spot. I really question, I have concerns about the traffic situation as someone who lives on that street and sees how it ebbs and flows. It is a bicycle boulevard, so that's an important primary. And particularly the visibility factor of this area. And so the staff report and materials cite somewhere around, like, four-hundred-and-twenty trips per day of, just like, traffic, three-hundred-and-fifty customers and seventies deliveries. And I don't, there's no way that that is equal or less than VNN Burger Bar's prior use. And so I really would recommend, I would like, as a neighbor and with a child, and I'm just concerned about public safety of the street, especially with the density, the rural place that just opened up, that this is looked at with an actual traffic study. Other than, I'm like totally for cannabis. I just think we can do better here. I really like their things for trash. I think the sustainability plan could use some actual water quality monitoring and data-taking. And there, I do have some concerns there, but I just really think that, you know, Arcata, where this happens. So we need to set the bar a little bit higher. And I mean, the roller coaster, we've been on this whole legalization roller coaster, and the industry is in shambles at the moment. So what are we going to do to address the war on drugs, to address like everything that's happened? And I know that's not, you know, we can't like conflate that on this one single, this single project. But I think, you know, there's a little bit more conversations we need to have about this project and how that fits into our community at large. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else?
Not seeing anything. Patricia?
All right. Would the applicant like to have the last word? You don't have to. No, yeah, okay. Yeah, why don't you come up and we'll ask you a few questions?
I do have a question, if you don't mind, Chair. Juliette made reference to the patio not being developed. And is that correct, unless the smoking ordinance gets overturned?
So the patio will be developed, and if it gets approved, the smoking will not. We were kind of basically saying that we understand the concerns of the neighborhood and of the city, and we want to make sure that things go right. And we just want you, guys, we just wanted you to know that we support that decision of not having the smoking at the lounge at this point. As far as the consumption part of it would be a lot more limited than what it was going to be before. Kind of like more of a, you know, daylight hours, you know, probably like four hours a day it would be open. It's not what makes the business. To have the smoking ability is one thing, but then to just have consumption is another. And we're kind of on the fence of, well, if we can't have smoking, is it worth doing? So we were going to try it and see, and then just see how it kind of plays out. You know, it might be a better business decision not to have it than to have it. You know, and I'll be more than happy to include parking spots for all vehicles at our spot. We have the room for it. You know, the reason we haven't done a landscape plan is because the smoking lounge was going to have a waterfall, kinds of different landscaping that was going to carry out throughout the project. And we're kind of waiting to see, is it going to get approved or is it not going to get approved? So that we knew how to move forward. Hearing the option of the consumption without smoking kind of opens that door to us to where we're like, might as well just go ahead and build it out, and then it'll just be a nice feature anyway. Even if it's for the employees to take breaks, you know, and just be a nice feature. But yes, the consumption lounge would be built. How long, you know, we just have to kind of see how it goes. Last thing we want as a business owner is problems at our business. You know, we don't want people hanging around. We want a real clean facility. If anyone has driven by our Eureka facility, they see it's spotless, it's taken care of. We don't allow any kind of, like, any consumers or, I don't know, citizens of Eureka, you know, hanging out. And, you know, we keep it real clean, real professional. And that's the way that the facility would be in Arcata.
Are there any other questions? I'm surprised that you're not asking this question. The fence that you're going to build around the Samoa Boulevard and the I Street, what can you describe that fence? I wasn't able to find it in here.
The state requires us to build a fence that you can't see through around the smoking area. The fence for the area, we're kind of taking recommendations from Fish and Game and from different people, what's best suited to keep the, to protect the creek. And what we've come up with is a solid fence. And what we've come up with is, is a solid fence at the bottom, because we want to be able to see the creek. I mean, there's no reason to have it if you can't see it, right? So, we'll do about a solid two-foot at the bottom, and then a tighter wire mesh at the top with wood accents. And then, we're going to plant a lot of ivy and stuff around it. That way, it gives kind of the natural look. The whole point is to make it natural and, you know, like it was meant to be.
What about the Samo Boulevard and I Street around the parking area? What kind of fence?
It'll be the same fence.
The same fence?
Yeah, the fence around the smoking lounge has to be solid. So, that box will be solid, and then the remaining fence all the way around the corner will be two-foot and then visible after that. And the reason of the two-foot is to catch the low, you know, trash from flowing from the streets and from the parking areas.
And then, what about entertainment, that sort of thing? Are you going to have music? You're going to have anything like that in the smoking area?
We might have, like, a real low-mood music kind of playing, but not, no, like, events or anything like that in the smoking area.
And then, sorry, I'm grilling you. So, how are you going to get, keep the smoke smell from the neighbors behind you, those two homes? I mean, it's going to carry, right?
Juliette actually has the information for this. She's actually looked up studies, and she can give you the more scientific version.
Well, if I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we can.
As a, as a first look at this, I guess one of the things I wanted to point out is that the predominant wind pattern lows from the northwest to the southeast on this property. So, for starters, and with the exception of when the storms come, when the winds come up from the south, which would not be an opportune time to be outside smoking anyway, predominantly the wind patterns are going to carry the smoke away from the property. But, really trying to get to the heart of your question about distance, we really wanted to look into this too, and where do these distances come from? And they, of course, come from secondhand smoke research for tobacco predominantly. And one National Institute of Health study from 2013 looked at, they put up a little something that made smoke, and then they measured smoke exposure by distance, moving farther away, and what they found was at about 30 feet distance, the exposure from the outdoor smoke is very, very minimal, and I think that's probably, perhaps in part where some of these codes come from that say smoking areas have to be 30 feet from any door. So, again, our consumption patio would be much farther than 30 feet away from any of the neighbors, all of the neighbors actually, and also the streets. So, basically, through dissipation through the wind, the smoke would become pretty negligible, I'm not going to say zero, but pretty negligible at 30 feet, and even more negligible than that farther out. Certainly, as wind speeds increase, you know, the amount of smoke hanging around would decrease. And another interesting study that we came across was done by the NIOSH, the National Institute for Occupational Safety and Health, and they were concerned about police officers' exposure to secondhand cannabis smoke, actually, at outdoor events at a, at an arena in a location where cannabis smoking is legal. And for the study, it should be noted that the police officers were working in and around, you know, around the edges, but also inside the venue. And of course, there were urine and blood samples taken at the end, and they did not find THC in either the urine or the blood samples. Now, that's not to say that there were no impacts whatsoever, and the study does recommend, you know, further research in terms of making sure that the police officers are protected, but, you know, from the first studies shown, even these folks that were working much more closely in, at these outdoor events, the THC was still not showing up in their urine and blood samples. So, you know, to answer your question, distance is your friend. Certainly, the predominant wind patterns are going to be helpful at this location. And, yeah, I mean, I guess I hope that that fully answers your question.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone have any other questions?
No.
Nope. All right, thank you very.
Oh, I had a couple of questions. I guess I wanted to say first to the city, as a former tobacco education educator, I was really excited about what we've done with the city, being more stringent with the guidelines over the state. I also wanted to say that I really appreciate your business wanting to protect your employees so that they're not being subjected to secondhand smoke. I also really like that you're using the hybrid vehicles and using Ben-Gulard as your art mural. I wanted to know if there's current consumption at your Eureka location?
At this time, we're approved for consumption at the Eureka location, but we did not build it out. And the reason we didn't build it out is, is our Eureka store is great for retail, but, I mean, you know, you got the movie theater right there, but really, it's not a night, a place to really come hang, you know, we can't really do the park light setting. You know, it'd be an, it'd be an indoor one, and right now, we use, we're a micro-business. So, we're running out of space for offices, let alone, you know, anything else. We do manufacturing, distribution out of the back, and that's what feeds the stores, you know. So, it's, at this point, no. It's approved, but not open.
So, I'm assuming that since it was approved, you didn't have substantial pushback from the community?
None. It was, it was actually City Eureka made it very easy to get consumption lounges open.
I was curious, do you know the neighboring businesses? And I noticed, like, one business, Humboldt Herb, had said they had not been notified. Have any of the other businesses that are in close proximity been notified?
We haven't really done a lot there yet, like, we've just kind of done the application process. We really haven't physically been there much. I have talked to the neighbors that are, like, right there where visibility, you know, where ones that, you know, kind of, I mostly just do security checks is all I really do. So, I go there, open it up, we've had a window busted, we've had a few people camped out in the creek, down by the creek, we've ran out, we've had, you know, that's why the fence is leaning over from people climbing over the fence to get to the creek. But that's really all I've been there. I mean, I, I totally understand where she's coming from. I've been a contractor for, since 1997, I've done land development, apartments, houses, commercial buildings, and, you know, I, what I've learned about public notices is keep it to yourself as long as you can. I have talked to the, like, the residential neighbor that was right behind us, I've talked to him, I've called him. He's the one who told us the, called us, tell us the window that broke out. I've talked to the body shop guys, I've talked to Mother Earth, I've talked to a lot of the business, businesses on that side, because they're the ones that I kind of come face to face with. My wife has been to your store, it's a beautiful store, she says. I haven't been there, and neither one of us consume cannabis, you know, so it's not, we don't go to, like, HPRC or Heart of Humboldt. We used to distribute to them back pre-2018, but we don't anymore. So, you know, it's kind of a small group that I've talked with. I haven't, like, circled the block or anything, knocked on doors.
I just, I noticed that there was a letter from one of the residents that was really close to you, and they weren't particularly happy. I was wondering if you had an opportunity to talk to them about some of their concerns, ways to mitigate that, make them happy?
That was what kind of led us to backing off of the smoking area, was that. And we're kind of, our feelings are, you know, the smoking lounge is not a moneymaker for cannabis businesses. It is not where the money is. If anyone thinks that, they're wrong. It is just strictly, it's kind of like you go to, well, the Dodge dealer used to, when you'd bring your car to get it serviced, they'd wash it, right? That was a great thing. But they don't do it anymore. They don't wash your car. Now, you get it back dirty. Well, now, you're like, oh, go somewhere else. To us, that's what it is. It's just a way to give a better service to our consumers, especially the tourist ones, because they're the ones that are, like, staying in hotels or staying at a RV park, and believe it or not, RV parks, they frown on you smoking outside in RV parks. You know, they really don't have that location. Redwood Park, the Plaza, the waterfront, everywhere pretty much, they're not allowed to consume the combustible cannabis. You know, I, I mean, me not being a consumer of it myself, I kind of, you know, have always had the philosophy, well, they'll find a place. But the truth is, they aren't finding places, and their litter and stuff is ending up on the sidewalks. We were going to a soccer game, my child's soccer game in the fall, and it was over in Eureka and off of Walnut where they have the soccer fields, and we got out of our car, and guess what was on the ground? One of our dew tubes was laying on the ground, not the, it didn't have cannabis in it, but the packaging. And, you know, that's what's happening. It's happening all over Arcata, it's happening all over Eureka, everywhere. And that's kind, the whole point of it, is to try to contain it. And there'll be smokeless ashtrays, so, you know, the smoke that'll be going up in the air won't be that much, it'll be, it'll be smokeless ashtrays with filters, it won't be, like, escaping all over. When it's windy and raining, nobody's going to be out there. You know, when the storms are blowing south, you know, from the south, it's not, nobody's going to be out there. I'm a father, I have four children. The safety of children's very important to us. I did, I called the person with the, what is it, eight children? I called and talked to them, found their phone number, tracked them down, asked them if they were concerned, and I don't see them here, you know. He told me he wasn't, he'll talk to his partner and let me know, but he never let me, he got back to me. So, I assume they're not concerned, but I, I know half of them are.
The business across the offices?
Yes.
They used to have several businesses there, counselors and other businesses that deal with children?
Yep.
Have you had a chance to talk to those folks?
I haven't talked to them lately, but my, one of my daughters actually went to one of them, so, no, I have not talked to them.
Commissioner, I'd add too that the noticing for...
It's up to the city.
Yeah, that we did have noticing to residents within 100 feet, so, addresses within 100 feet, and then property owners within 300?
I misspoke, I shouldn't have used the word notice. I was just thinking, as a potential business, just kind of like the right thing to do is to go talk to your neighbors, and it sounds like you've done some.
Yeah, I'm a pretty shy person. So, it's really hard for me to go knock on strangers' doors. It's hard for me to stand up here in front of you, that's why I didn't want to do it.
I think that was all my questions. Thank you so much for your time.
No problem, thank you. Is that it?
Is that it? Oh, nope, that's not it.
I've got a quick question for staff. Is there going to be any design review involved in this project? I see they talk about changing windows and we have the fencing and so on, the landscaping. Is that going to come back to us, or is there another avenue that's handling that?
The design review didn't seem like it rose to the level that it would go to a public hearing, so it will be handled administratively.
I do have a couple suggestions about the landscaping. First, I want to commend you on volunteering to do the upgrading of the, and the restoration of the creek area. That's terrific. Julie asked a question about the, about a fence along Samo Boulevard, and you mentioned something about a two-foot fence. You know, I'm trying to visualize that, and I can't, I can't picture a two-foot fence that would look good.
So, it'd be two-foot solid on the bottom to stop the debris from blowing, and then the other four foot would be, would be a transparent material.
I believe that we're limited to three feet along the street there.
And that could be, you know, of course, whatever we do will meet whatever requirements from the, I assume Caltrans or Public Works is who's in charge of that.
In our land use code, is it not?
Yeah, absolutely, and that would absolutely be part of the, the design review, and my hope is that we'd work with their, you know, their, whoever's, you know, drafting up those plans before they submitted something with a six-foot fence, but, yeah, we'll try and convey that to, to the agent.
Great. Looking at the site plan, the parking, you have a row of parking spaces, and on the south end, there's a, an empty wedge-shaped space. So, I suggest that when you're doing your landscape plan, you plan to knock out the pavement there and make that, you know, integrate that into the, into the landscaping?
Yeah, the, right now, the drop curb is almost twice as much as it's going to be. So, there wasn't as big of an area prior to the recommendation, but now that the recommendation, we definitely, there's a lot of room there. And that's kind of why we waited on the, on the plan, is because, you know, I've been to these a lot, and I, you know, you start out, you bring one thing to it, and you leave with something completely different, and so, we kind of wanted to let, you know, get input and put it in there, kind of like the, you know, the trike parking spot. We got plenty of room for it, there's no reason not to incorporate something, you know. Maybe we could have extra wide bicycle spots or something. I mean, we can figure it out, no reason not to accommodate everybody we can with the project.
Yeah, I, well, yeah, as I say, I commend you on doing that extra landscaping, and if you can work in more landscaping, it's all to the good, because it, right now, it's kind of a blank-looking...
Yeah.
...spot there on the corner. And there are some, some rules about how high the landscaping could be, that close to the sidewalk. I believe if you, as long as you keep it under three feet, you can do pretty much anything you want.
Okay.
So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Is that it?
Yes, we have another member of the, yes, thank you. Okay, one more, one more. You have three minutes.
Will the rules allow me to speak?
Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, so, one of my biggest fears about this coming before the Planning Commission was that we were going, this premature conversation was going to happen about the smoking ban that I've been nurturing for those last few years with Joe, and we would just lose this opportunity. So, I do want to bring to your attention that there are some pathways through using existing code. If you look at the 5700, where it talks about the non-smoking ordinance in Arcata, it has a few exemptions, and one of the exemptions is a retail tobacco or cigarette store having onsite tobacco sales. And this, that one. Earlier in the same document, they, while they're talking about tobacco smoke the whole time, they do refer to cannabis smoke and cannabis vapor. They don't actually connect the two of them together, and typically, that wouldn't be the way that I would go. I would bifurcate cannabis smoke from tobacco smoke, because one is healing and one is harmful. But, I do believe that this existing code is already here, and that the simplest way through would be to recognize that when this code was written, there probably weren't cannabis retail stores. And so, just recognizing that potentially the verbiage could be changed to include in that same consideration cannabis retail location, the same as a tobacco retail location. And then, all of a sudden, the code would then have existing spaces for onsite consumption. And that might be an easier avenue or a better avenue where the other retails could potentially work with the city to figure out how they too could do, you know, have onsite consumption. One of the things about cannabis smoke and cannabis consumption areas is that they are 21 and over already by nature, there's the security guards before they come in there, and the people who are there typically choose to consume cannabis and consume cannabis, as do the employees mostly. So, I think that protecting the employees is good and protecting everyone as well. For myself, I have a very large retail space, it's an experiential marketplace, the vision was always to eventually have onsite consumption. One of the reasons why for me are because we have music and art and events, and it ends up becoming a risk and a liability that I have to stop it and not have rules around it, and regulations around things make it easier. And so, for me, to be able to have regulations that say, hey, you can smoke here at this time, we have this type of ventilation. And I do believe that the neighborhood is a great space for consumption, and I believe that between both the Smithers and Irene Simone's property, just the proximity, I think, was what they were mostly concerned about. And for myself and for this location, I would prefer outdoor cannabis consumption. But, if we were to look at the existing code that has an exemption for onsite tobacco retailers to allow consumption onsite, it would be an easier pathway for the other dispensaries who've been trudging it out all these years and going through regulations and suffering, frankly. It would be a good way to help them out. So, if you have any questions, I did want to bring to your attention that I do have Hazel Bagwell with me, who is kind of... Bagwell with me, who is kind of the state's expert on consumption because she works with the Emerald Cup and has been doing events from day one. So if we had any questions around law, we could potentially ask about code, but maybe not. It seems like he answered everything about fencing and everything, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you. Okay, the public comment period is now closed and it's time for commissioners' deliberations. Does anyone have any questions for staff or any comments that they'd like?
This has been a really interesting session and I, I think we've learned a lot by having a bit of a back and forth instead of a more conventional public comment and staff report and et cetera, et cetera. I am glad that the staff report today actually did strike out the language that would have allowed in the conditions of approval and the findings, the outdoor smoking consumption area. I, I do feel that the city of Arcata has been very clear about odors from cigarette smoke or tobacco smoke. And the odor issue with cannabis smoke is more or less the same, given that Arcata has required many businesses to go to extraordinary expenses and lengths to contain the odors associated with their businesses. It would be frankly, an insult to those businesses that we have required to invest in odor control to suddenly allow or promote odors that would be smellable from a public right-of-way, let alone by neighbors. So I'm really happy with the proposal for this business to get involved in the stream restoration. I have, I have no problems with consumption onsite that does not involve odors that people off-site will smell. We've had delivery services that have posed no problems for neighbors. It does, it does appear that this particular part of town will, will have a lot of concentrated businesses of one type. And we, we have had a special consideration for that. This is gonna be kind of an experiment to add yet another cannabis business in that very small area. So I, I, I would probably go to approve the project in general with that south 10-foot movement of any outdoor consumption area from the property line. Go for all of those riparian and landscaping and design considerations that we've just heard some talk about and eliminate any language about smoking outside. Because this is not something that I want to see either at this business or at any other business where people in a public right-of-way would smell it.
I have a question.
Yes.
Currently, right now, what is the regulation for cannabis consumption by individuals? Say like around the plaza or other public areas?
Currently, state law has it that you cannot consume cannabis in public.
Sorry if I'm sound confused, because I was told by somebody in the city that as long as they're moving and walking, they could, they just have to be moving and not stopping on a corner like we're sitting at the plaza, but that's not correct, is that?
I thought, I maybe didn't hear your question correctly, but I thought you mentioned smoking cannabis. Smoking tobacco is another...
Cannabis, I, yeah, I did.
Okay, so state law prohibits smoking cannabis in public?
Okay.
The city of Arcata has a smoking prohibition about passing through, but that doesn't exempt one from smoking cannabis and passing through because you'd be smoking in public. So it'd violate the state code. Tobacco was the original intent of the city code. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
Of course, when you go down to the plaza, you see that that's happening all of the time. So I have some mixed feelings about, I feel like having it confined to a particular area so that, you know, people who don't want to be subjected to the smoke won't be, or children. And so, you know, like I said, I have mixed feelings because it's happening anyway. So if we could confine it to a particular area at least, then those who don't want to smoke it are not having to be subjected to it. I did have another concern about noticing, so it's within, did you say 100 feet, David?
Residences are noticed at 100 feet and property owners are at 500 feet. So there's a greater circulation for property owners. If you're a tenant, in some cases, the property owner gets the notice.
So if you are a cannabis business, and as pointed out, most of these folks don't own their own business, they wouldn't have been notified because even though they're within 500 feet, and if this proposal goes through, we're gonna have five cannabis businesses all within the 500, within 500 feet of each other. The other, say like HPRC or Heart of Humboldt, do any of them know that this has, this is happening? I'm just wondering.
It was, it was noticed in the paper as well. I can't tell you that, whether they know or not, because they didn't specifically receive direct notice. I would also point out that, you know, their notification, any particular individual's notification is actually not a finding that you have to make to approve the project. And there's a specific exemption for, you know, notices that were not received. And so we may have made an attempt to send a notice. Joe has a stack of yellow cards here that we received back that were returned where we tried to send notice and for whatever reason, the address wasn't good. So folks that don't receive a notice, they're not on our rolls. We go through the effort, we do our best to, you know, follow the procedures. I know that notification, public engagement, all of these issues are, you know, a big concern right now for our community. The reality is that we typically go above and beyond the legal minimum threshold. In this case, the public, the notifications that we mail out are only required by the, you know, the coastal zoning to go out 300 feet, we go out 500 feet. And so I, I think I understand the, the line of questioning, but it's, it's not, I just wanted to point out, it's not a finding that you have to make.
And I just have one more comment question. If I understood, one of the people who wrote in, or maybe I heard it somewhere else, I'm not sure, had mentioned that this particular VNN Burger, there were a lot of potential other businesses that were not cannabis-related, which would give some diversity to the community, possibly a cafe or a bookstore or something else, but that the owner was only interested in selling it. And so my understanding is that you've already purchased the building, correct?
It's the lease option purchase, depending on how the...
Okay. So yeah, I guess my concern is that we have so many cannabis businesses plumped all within 500 feet of each other. And it is, there is an opportunity to have put something else there, but because the seller, which obviously is their, you know, choice, but they wanted to sell it only, because it's a lease option now. Yeah, I just was wanting to put that out there, that diversity would have been another, my, my, my preference, I guess.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Teckney?
Yeah, a question of staff. The question about the smoking is a municipal code that isn't up for us to make decision on tonight. Is that correct? Because it would have to go through city council. So really, we're either gonna pass this or not as an application with stricken smoking onsite. And whether the applicant wants to go forward with the patio and all that stuff is, you know, peripheral. Is that correct? And might, you did say we might later have a discussion about challenging the smoking ordinance or, you know?
Yes, you're correct.
Okay.
The planning commission, in staff's opinion, does not have the ability to amend the municipal code at this point. And we would suggest you not approve the project that includes smoking or vaping cannabis at this site.
Okay.
Until those regulations are, if and when they're changed.
Okay. And if the planning commission chose to, we might want to do a straw poll or make a recommendation or anything like that. We've done that kind of thing in the past, correct? Just to push the ball forward towards the city council. I think it's a great application. I can't see any reason to deny this project. The improvements to the site are needed and that there be occupancy. I did also like the idea of some kind of restaurant or something there, but that wasn't the seller's wish and here we are. I, I personally am not, particularly as people are moving, it seems to me dramatically towards vaping rather than, you know, burning flower or whatever we used to call it. I think the smell thing is, is vastly reduced on what it used to be. And personally, I'm not, particularly on this site and the way it's being presented, concerned about the smell, whether they're consuming edibles or fizzy waters or vaping or in some cases, also burning flowers. However, as that's not part of the jurisdiction, I just want to weigh in on that I don't see any reason to deny this project and ready to move forward.
Are there any other questions? I, I just have a question. So if we, if we do, I have no idea how this is gonna go. If we do move forward and say we do approve it, that isn't gonna necessarily lend our support to the city council saying, oh, because they approved that, that means that they are in favor of this municipal code amendment?
No, not at all. And the, you know, the commission can take that up at a separate time if they wish, you know, whether to initiate a code amendment or to have some kind of a, you know, policy recommendation to the city council on that matter. You know, the history, as Joe outlined it, you know, we basically punted when we adopted cannabis regulations. Cannabis regulations allowed for onsite consumption when they were, you know, adopted at the state level and those have been amended a couple of times. We said, hey, look, if you can find a way to do a consumption lounge, then more power to you. But we didn't take any proactive steps at that time to assist in the development of, you know, those, those cannabis lounges that, you know, were, would be prohibited by the municipal code. And so, you know, now we have two applicants before us or one application and a person of interest before us that wants to, you know, establish that use. Maybe it's time for the city to, to take a look at that again.
So regardless of if we approve this project, they're still not gonna be able to have smoking onsite until...
Correct.
...municipal code is. So I almost feel like we're wasting his time, but at least, you know, it's out there. So does anybody have any other questions? If not, I can entertain a motion. We'll see what happens.
I can make a motion. I would move to approve a project. I'm looking for the number.
We have a, if you can read the recommendation directly, that'd be great, because we have a new system that we're doing where we're actually taking action on the SEQA first. And so that's, that's the first action.
Okay, so this, there's the SEQA exemption that you need us to...
Yeah, under the recommendation, so...
Okay, so, and can, should these be separate motions? Would that be easier or can they all be one?
No, they don't have to be, that's fine. One motion, it's fine.
Okay, so I would move to approve the SEQA exemption, the coastal development permit, is that in, is that part of this? And findings of approval to eliminate findings related to smoking onsite, which are located on packet page 16 in the findings, three and four. So eliminate those. And the conditions of approval with the change that staff recommended striking the material in the authorized uses and development section A, the end of that first paragraph. And the odor management section stricken in page 27, section C-1. And with a condition of approval to move the patio location 10 feet from the property line. Although now, I guess since they want to do it further south yet, that, that might be moot. But I, I think that that was a suggestion from staff that should be in here as well. I think, I think that's, that's it. SEQA, coastal development permit, findings and conditions of approval. Is that correct?
You may want to retain C1 odor management. That's not necessarily directly related to the cannabis consumption area. Some of these facilities have, you know, the storage and whatnot that, you know, has some odor associated with it. So there may be odor management controls that are necessary at the business in general.
Okay, let's, let's keep that as we see in the draft conditions of approval.
Are we ready for a second?
Are you, are you finished?
You guys have a question?
Yes, I'm finished.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I know it's very complicated. So all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously.
For the record, that Figaro, Figaro voted aye.
All right, that was a tough one. Okay, so let's move on. Thank you, thank you.
Can I have a second? I can teach, like you may. Oh, okay, I was just gonna, you know, we get posted on the building.
So let's move on to business items. We need to consider whether the 2023 capital improvement plan is consistent with the general plan. Can we get a staff report, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Happy to bring this item to you tonight. And I just want to check in with our deputy director of engineering and see if he wanted to make the presentation. I'm happy to do so, but I wanted to make the offer.
Joe, I'm happy to let you make that presentation up here to answer any questions that anyone has about the project specifically.
I'm sorry, try, try again, David.
I said, no, I'm, I'm happy with you making the presentation. I'm just, if you have any questions.
Okay, great. Okay. Sorry, we didn't work that out in advance. Before you tonight is a resolution to find the city's capital improvement program in compliance, conformance with the general plan. This is an annual task that the planning commission takes on to ensure that the newly updated, newly added projects to the, to the capital improvement program do comport with the general plan so that they can, you know, be approved through the budgeting process and then built out in our community. And so we're asking that you, you know, consider the projects, ask any questions that you wish to ask. David is here to answer any technical questions and then adopt planning commission resolution number... Number PC 2201, which would update our general plan conformance for the CIP. And with that, I will leave it to any questions.
Do we have any questions for, okay, Commissioner Mayor?
Okay, so, we do this every year, and every year, this is actually a good opportunity to get some updates on some of these projects that have been carrying over from year to year to year, and some of the new ones that, lo and behold, appear for the first time. So I did want to ask a few questions about some of these projects that might deserve some additional information, and I made a little list here, so if I can just go through them one by one, that will help. So the first one is on page four of seven, page 67 in our packet, project 64-0001, the water storage zone one. I'm assuming that's a new tank, and I'm wondering exactly where that tank is going to be located.
Yeah, absolutely. Zone one is currently served, I believe, by one water tank, and so this would add a tank to provide additional service. Zone one, I believe, and David, correct me if I'm wrong, is our largest zone within the city. And so having that backup capacity would be helpful, in particular as the zone one grows and develops over, into the future, but also to service currently approved projects like the Creekside Annexation is in zone one, and one of the mitigation measures was that they contribute to that project, for example.
And where would that tank be?
And, yes, I was just going to get to that. So that tank is located behind Happy Valley on Green Diamond Land that's just outside of the city limits. We had to get the elevation, so we put it up on a bluff there, just outside the city limits.
Okay.
Is that basically accurate, David?
Yeah, kind of out behind, out off of West End Road, nearest road, I would say, yeah.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. We can picture that. The next one is on the next page, page five of seven, or page 68 of our packet, project 65-0013, the wastewater, water to Eureka Ready Mix at Boyd Road. And it involves a new sewer line and lift station at Boyd Road. Is this a project that is entirely within Arcata's city limits, or would it involve a potential annexation?
Yeah, no, this is entirely within existing city limits. It's related to the annexation that we did of Eureka Ready Mix a number of years back. And so this, this sewer line and the, and the water line that will be extended out there are to serve that new development potential on Eureka Ready Mix property. And then it's also connected to the CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, CV 23 project, I think we had, to provide wastewater service to Arcata House Partnerships site that's just outside the city limit, but is, has a failing septic, and so they're going through emergency sewer connection process.
But that would not involve an annexation of that parcel?
The, the emergency sewer annexation, the emergency sewer connection process requires that they make application for annexation. The findings for annexation are going to be a little challenging, because they don't, they're not actually contiguous with the city. They have an easement, and so we have some details to work through on that.
Okay. Further down on that page, 670004, the wastewater treatment plant reconfiguration. And of course, we've talked about that in the past. Is there a date anticipated with that?
We are currently working through the final coastal development permit application requirements with the local coastal staff. My hope is that sometime over the next, you know, three to six months, that they will be reviewing that at a hearing. And then we'd be moving towards, you know, the Phase One improvements as quickly as possible. Phase One improvements mostly are just replacing aged infrastructure. And David, I don't know if you have a list of those improvements, if you're interested, but it's, it's sort of the, it's not the adding the Oxbown piece that really is secondary, and we need to see how Phase One, you know, operates before, you know, being able to design Phase Two.
Okay, one more. Moving to the other end of the marsh, and the next page, 67-0038, the I Street Dock and the Vault Toilet. When this first appeared on, on the capital improvements list, the dock improvements indicated were to serve motorized recreational boat traffic. And I'm wondering if that is still the type of dock improvement that is in this budget for nearly half a million dollars, or if it's now basically non-motorized or emergency boat docking only, without the motor boats involved?
I can answer that.
Okay, yeah.
I'm sorry. You're right, currently it is set up as a project and a boat launch for non-motorized boats, more like for kayaks and things like that. It has a, what's called a low freeboard launching float at the end of it, so it makes it easier for smaller vessels like kayaks to get in and out and on and off load.
Okay, great, yeah. The reason that that's on my list is that recreational motorboat dock there, I think, would, would not be consistent with our general plan, which sees that location as a wildlife refuge, rather than a nice loud motorboat dock to get us to Eureka. So, good. And the last one is the Arcata Ridge Trail Development Crossing, 87-0002. And I'm wondering if we have a, an expected date of construction there, and if you might want to say a little word about the delay that I think was related in part to a possible lawsuit. Is that, do we have a date for, for that project right now?
I don't think we have a date at this point. We're still submit, we're, I believe we're submitting an application for the encroachment permit for the crossing. And I believe the, you know, the, the trail alignment is lined out, you know, on the ground, and I believe that some preliminary work is being done to, to install the trail on our property, the part that doesn't require any new permitting.
Okay, okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, any other? I had a question. So on page, I believe, packet page 71, 81004, of course, I'm asking about this because it's in Valley West. We have a $5,000 which will augment any grant funds. And I guess my question is, what happens if those grant funds are not awarded? So it's 81004, Carlson Park Mad River Trail.
What page is that on?
It's on mine 71, oh, but you know what, I inserted a bunch of pages because I had my own stuff I was adding. Sorry about that. But you can find it at 81004.
Yep.
It's page 69.
Thank you, okay. So there's a $5,000 is allocated, which will augment grant funds if they're awarded. My understanding is that we've applied for this grant maybe two, three times, and it has not been awarded. So I guess my question is, what happens if there is no grant, or has that already been awarded? What happens if it's not awarded, because it's going to augment, right? So does that mean the park gets nothing?
So I got to be honest, I'm not extremely familiar with this project. I've had a couple discussions with the Environmental Services on this. They are taking the lead on this project. I know we've applied for a couple grants, and we have not gotten some of those grants, and we have, we're in the process of applying for another one. So we have, we have, there are several grant opportunities out there, but I don't know that we have enough yet to fully fund everything that we're, we're hoping for. And I'm not sure, David, if you know it any more than I do on that one.
So my understanding is there's three grants, one of which is for Carlson Park Cleanup, which is by the river access. The other two are supposed to be for amenities for Carlson Park itself at the entrance of the park, which would include park benches, picnic tables, and a variety of other amenities. And my question is, if this grant is not awarded, again, there's $5,000 that's going to be allocated, I don't know what you're going to do with that. You can't get much out of that, and I don't even think you can get a picnic bench or out of it. Because I did some research, and what it would cost, and what the city would do, and they want, you know, to put a cement platform, it would have to be anchored down. So I guess, of course, I'm just looking at, so Bloomfield has new recreation equipment for $50,000. Eighth and Ninth Street has bike and beautification for $50,000. Isaacson's has bike and beautification for $509,175. I Street Vault, well, that's different, sorry. Recreation, Redwood Park has $660,000. Shea Park has park equipment coming at $333,000. Larson Park is actually going to get a court recon, you know, they're going to restructure it, so I just wish we had a court. Another $40,000, and the sports complex park-related facility is another $75,000. So that's a lot of money, and I don't see anything on here for Valley West, Carlson Park, or North Arcata, other than $5,000, which is contingent on an award grant that hasn't been awarded yet for, I think, three, maybe even four years.
Yeah, I think you raised some, you know, some really good points around, you know, budgeting and project priorities. The way that the list is structured for the CIP list is that we put, it's sort of a wish list. Not all of these have identified funding sources. Some of them do, but most of them don't. And our objective is to try and estimate the project costs, so that when we go out for grants, that we can, you know, find them consistent with the general plan, and then, you know, through this process, and then start to build those projects out as, as those grant funds or other funding sources become available. Many of the projects that you'd identified are actually tied specifically to affordable housing projects that were, you know, secured in the area, the vicinity of where those improvements are going, and it was required through that grant funding source that those funds be spent in.
Like the Isaacson project.
With, yeah, exactly, within the nexus. But I think that, you know, you.
What about Shea Park or Larson Park? Are they also tied to affordable housing complex, so that those amenities would be provided by the developer, or something like that?
The Shea Park is Larson Park, I'm unsure, I'm not sure what that one's tied to. David, do you know what the funding is for that? Or if there's funding?
I guess I'm just concerned that, once again, there's disparity and not equity. Is this?
I want.
Go ahead.
I think it was STI is what moved to mind.
Okay, so yeah, that one may be also associated with the affordable housing project. Yeah, I don't disagree with the points that you're making. The forum for, you know, that discussion, I definitely think is a goal-setting forum with the council. The objective of this is to identify that these projects are consistent with the, the general plan, and we've tried to lay out the rationale, the policies that we believe are related to the project piece. You know, so certainly, I think, you know, voicing concerns to, you know, the council that does set those budgetary priorities would be the right venue to, you know, to raise that issue, and this, this document, I think, helps you make that point.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions?
Yeah, I just saw Little Lakes on here, wanted an update on that, wondering if it's almost clean and almost ready for its next phase. And the other was land acquisition for sea level rise, which had a million dollar estimate on it, and I wondered if there was land in particular that was identified for that.
Can you point to me that second one? I could tell you off the cuff about Little Lake, but I'm not sure which, which project that ties to.
Yeah, 51-0013, page one of seven, land acquisition, stormwater management for sea level rise adaptation, acquire land adjacent to marsh and wildlife sanctuary.
David, are you aware what that is related to?
So I believe there's a couple parcels, maybe, that, that are, you know, have potential, but I don't think that any particular one parcel has been earmarked yet specifically, no.
So I think it's a general, you know, sort of strategy of trying to acquire important easements, pieces of land, et cetera, to assist with the sea level rise strategy, primarily around, you know, managing the, you know, stormwater and, and also, you know, for living shorelines and whatnot.
Yeah, makes sense, thank you.
And then in terms of the Little Lake, we have been assigned a new rep at the Water Board, and they've gone through in, you know, maybe the, the most detailed review of the project history that's ever been done, and has been working with our, our consultant that we have the assessment grant with, SHN, to prepare a, you know, single document that identifies, you know, all of the, the work that's been done on the site, and then, you know, proposal for how to clean it up. We currently, we applied for and failed to get an EPA grant for cleanup, and we are going for an ECRG grant, something Creative Land Recycling, I'm sorry, totally drawing a blank on the, what the acronym means, but it's another source through the Department of Conservation to try and clean up lands, and so, right now, we don't have funds identified for, for cleanup grant, but we're continuing to pursue those. We have narrowed the contamination down to one small site that was near the former Kilm Building. There's some dioxin there that we need to remove, and so we're steadily working towards that.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? If not.
I had another question, sorry. And this might not be the time, but I'm just trying to understand, so when these get on here, it's because there's funds that have been identified. Have we ever hired a designated grant writer yet? Because that might make the difference, because we're really not even getting a place at the table, because there's no funds identified for Valley West. And so I guess I'm just trying to find out the process, because it's going to be another year. And then to Judith's question or point, how do we find out about unfinished or projects that haven't even been started? Because we did get a little light, I guess, if you will, on 2019 and 2020 of goals and priorities, but none of those things ever came to fruition. And so I'm just wondering, like, do they come back on here if they haven't finished or gotten started? So where did they go? Because they're not here anymore.
So, you know, I think that, you know, this, and correct me if I'm wrong, David, but I think that this was intended to be sort of the new projects summary schedule, so these would be the items that are being added to the CIP, and that is a little confusing to me, because some of these are longstanding, ongoing projects. So, David, can you correct me if I'm, if I've got that wrong?
Sure. So if you look at the project list, the first page, it says new CIP projects, it's in, like, kind of a green color, and then starting with page two, it says existing projects.
Existing, okay.
So the first page just have the new projects. So that's really what we're, we're bringing to the Planning Commission, Commission meeting tonight, really just to, to ensure consistency with general plan. The, the remaining pages are more just kind of an update on some existing projects that have been on the list, and some of them, some of them, there's not a lot going on currently, and they've just been projects that have been on the list for multiple years, and have, have the potential to, to grow into more. the potential to grow into more as we get funding or as there's just more progress being made on that project. But one thing that I did want to kind of mention tonight is that I know that you guys have asked about some information on how well the projects, I guess, kind of updates on what's going on with them and things like that. And so one thing that we're currently working on this year pretty heavy is a new five-year CIP document. And it's going to have a lot more information. It's going to talk about past projects that have been completed, where at with them on updates. And it's also going to have a lot on the current projects and future projects where it's going to spell out multiple years of funding and/or phases. For example, some projects, they may only have, say, $10,000 for the planning phase, and that's all we have now. And we're hoping for some future grant projects that may be two or three years down the road. So it'll have some of that spelled out. It will have, like, there's money for, again, for planning and money for design. And if there's no money for construction, it'll have some of that stuff identified in there. So it'll have a little bit more information. And it'll also kind of recap some of the progress that has been made since the previous CIP. So hopefully this year, it's going to, we're trying to get the CIP rolled out with budget. And so it'll be a much bigger document, more informative document, that'll have more information on our current and future projects and past projects as well.
But you had mentioned that there were specific projects that you feel like aren't on this list.
I guess I'll wait-
No, I'm sorry, David, I was talking to-
I guess I'll wait for the recap. When is that particular document coming?
That's still in process. It's still in development. So I don't know that we can give a timeline for that. And we can certainly bring that as, you know, a regular item to the commission if you're interested in seeing an update on those, maybe, you know, once or twice a year or something like that. The, you know, I wanted to point out too that the city council identified, I believe, $500,000 through the ARPA funds that were committed to the Valley West area through the participatory budgeting process. And I know you probably know more about that piece than I do.
You're surprising me. I didn't know there was $500,000. We got $15,000, which was from the general fund.
Maybe I stand corrected.
Yeah, no, please, get me excited. No, it was $15,000 through the general fund. And then there are $30,000 ARPA funds that have been allocated by the city. But bring that $500,000, I will find good things to do in Valley West.
And so the point I was going to make is that that budgeting process that Kuna went through, those projects, if they are the types of capital improvements that would end up on this list, then that's how they would get onto this list, is through that budgeting process and through the goal setting. And so there may be, you know, projects that you're thinking of that aren't on this list yet that will show up on a future list.
Yeah, the projects I were thinking were from 2019 and 2020 priorities and goals for Valley West. So I'll go look and do some homework and find out what they are all about.
All right. So if we believe that these capital improvement programs is consistent with the general plan, would someone like to make a motion to approve resolution PC 22-01?
I'd be happy to.
We have a first from Commissioner Tagney.
Yeah, and would you like me to read just the title of it here?
Yeah.
This is a motion to approve the general plan consistency for the capital improvement program fiscal year 2020-2023.
We have a first, we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Commissioner Davies. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, all right, motion approved. Correspondents and communications?
I just have one. Right now, the Equity Arcata Home Away From Home group is doing a distribution here at the end of March. And so they're asking for donations. And specifically, donations of new and unused supplies, including non-perishable food items, gift cards to local grocery stores and restaurants, toiletries, including soap, shampoo, conditioner, menstrual supplies, toilet paper, household cleaning supplies, and monetary donations will be accepted. We're accepting those here at the city manager's office. And those home away from home items go to support students who receive sort of, you know, gift baskets that they take back, you know, gift packages that they take back with those essential supplies, as well as a nice meal that's provided on the day of the event and a great way to socialize between, you know, folks at the university, students at the university, and folks in the community. So I just wanted to message that out at this meeting and let you all know that. You're welcome to make a donation as well and are welcome to attend the event.
David, is it over on D Street again?
I believe it's on D Street, yes. Let me double check that. I'm going to have to look that up and message it out till you can-
I heard yes through the door here.
Okay. Dylan, our IT guy is confirming yes. And that's March 27.
Are there any other?
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
I don't know if anybody saw, but Cal Poly Humboldt's put out their master plan for development projects for the next five or seven years or however long it takes. But they're quite exciting and ambitious, including three separate dorm projects, two parking facilities, as well as a few buildings within the campus. It's outlined on local media as of today. There's another alternative energy survey that's on the North Coast Environmental's website that is something that NHSU Projects wants us all to take so that they can start planning our energy future locally. And this is a Eureka-based thing, but there's a Gulch survey of how Eureka should manage the gulches. And they would really like input on that from anybody willing. And that's it. Tomorrow's a tsunami test.
Okay, and then I have one thing too. So regarding the Gateway Area Plan, I didn't know about the rest of the commission, but all of a sudden, after all this time, I'm hearing so much noise about this. It's almost like, I almost feel like the method of drafting this plan was not transparent enough or we didn't work hard enough to get community input. And I don't mean, I don't want to confuse input with buy-in. I feel like we haven't been trying hard enough to get community input, actual input. There were these surveys that were sent out with choices, but those choices didn't seem to come from the public. So where I'm going with this is, what I wanted to suggest was, when I first got on the commission, like 15 years ago, I don't know how long ago it was, Tom Conlin was the Director of Community Development. When we were working on the land use code and the general plan, we had extra meetings. And those extra meetings were just for working on those plans. And we went element by element, and the community was super involved. They were, the place was crowded and we met all the time. So it was a ton of work, but we did a great job. And we actually won an award, City of Arcata won an award for our work. So my long and winded point is, we have a lot of members who don't feel like they're being heard about this plan. And maybe we need to rethink how, we need to be more transparent. Maybe we need to have some extra meetings. And maybe we need to invite the public to come in more. And anyway, I feel like we could do a little bit better job with that plan and get that going.
Chair, you're hurting my feelings. No, I'm joking. You know, certainly we can-
It's so hard.
Yeah, we can agendize that for our next meeting. You know, certainly it's not agendized, so we can't discuss it in detail. But I will say that, you know, part of the strategy that we've been taking for the public engagement for this, these updates, has been, you know, a mix of both, you know, planning commission, city council meetings, but also taking meetings to meet people where they're at. There's a huge demographic that doesn't have the privilege to be able to come to these meetings that we miss out when we only have special meetings and study sessions. In fact, even though we're working really hard to, you know, to extend our efforts and have our engagement demographic mirror to the best we can, the demographic we see in the city as a whole, it's still, we're still missing the mark, even with all the additional engagement we're doing. You know, I certainly would encourage and, you know, love to include more, you know, special meetings with the planning commission. And if you're all up to doing that, we can certainly start setting those. We're just now starting to get the documents to look at, though, I guess is what I would say. And so we now have something, you know, we have, as you'd mentioned with Tom Conlin, that you went through them chapter by chapter. We're just now getting the chapters. I mean, the document, you know, was generated after multiple years of public engagement. It was generated based on a reflection of that engagement. And ultimately, you know, we've only had it for about three months. It was released in December, so four months now. So we're right at the beginning stage of a lot of that engagement. So I'll start sending out meeting invites for all the special meetings we're going to be having.
Yeah, we were meeting every week. That was when I first got on the commission. I thought, what did I get myself into? Because it was just supposed to be twice a month. But the public, they were tuning in. They were seeing us on TV. They were showing up. So it was great. So if we could do something similar. And just because it is a public document, we own it, and the public needs to be a part of it. So, so is anything else?
I would like to say something.
Yes.
I just want to piggyback. What I'm hearing from the community is there is a difference between buy-in and input. And so although we might be meeting, although we can always do better on the public engagement, I don't feel like they feel like they have any kind of, lost my words, any way to do any of their particular input. And I was talking to Dave Miserv, former councilperson, and he was sharing with me when we were crafting the general plan about how that was done and that there was a lot of engagement and people, there was like a multitude of committees. And he was like, there were like 35 committees putting this together. And he was talking about, he was really excited about that. And so I'm just wondering, you know, as Julie had talked about, that maybe we can kind of up the ante a bit and give people an opportunity, not just for us to tell them what we're doing, but what they would like to see done as well.
Yeah, I will certainly agendize this because we've gotten way beyond just simple communications at this point.
All right, if there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.